We call this meeting of the Windsocket City Council to order for Monday, July 25, 2022. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilman Gillette?
Here.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Here.
Councilman Susi?
Here.
Councilman Ward?
Here.
President Gendron?
Here. Could you please stand for the prayer and the pledge?
God our Father, we ask that you send your blessing upon this city and upon this council. Guide us in our efforts, increase our motivation, and strengthen our resolve to build a better community and ensure a brighter future for the city of Windsocket. This we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the heavens and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First item is a continuation of the public hearing to ratify the tentative agreement between the local, the New England Police Benevolent Association Local 808 and the city of Windsocket. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this item? Hearing none. I'd like to move on, Madam Clerk, to the agenda for board of licensed commissioners. Oh, can we have a motion to close? Motion made by Councilman Canoia?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillette to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the public hearing is closed. Agenda for board of licensed commissioners.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the following licenses: new licenses for Class F liquor, class of game of chance, bingo, carnival, fireworks, and vitrioling; holiday sales, private detective and agency, street vendor; also renewals for holiday sales and private detective agency.
Just to be clear, Councilman Gillette, that is for 22 LC 27, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gillette.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward and Canoia. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22 LC 27 is approved, seven to zero.
22 LC 28, application of licenses and renewal of licenses.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve one license for street vendor.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Sierra. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22 LC 28 is approved, seven to zero. Public comment. I would ask if there's anyone here that would like to address the city council. You please approach the podium. Adjust the microphone so that we can hear you. Speak clearly into the mic. State your name and address for the clerk, and please keep your comments to under five minutes, and obviously in good taste. Is there anyone that would like to address the city council?
My name is Charles Lamoyne. I live at 174 St. Barnaby Street, Windsocket. I have an 02895. I brought some tape up because I'm still getting the sun in my eyes. If they can't afford to buy bigger, better shades, I think they didn't make a good comment on these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
Good evening. Philip LeBrecq, 391 Duluth Avenue. Very short and very sweet, but sometimes I'll begin by saying management always sets the pace and the quality of their departments and stuff like that, but it's the little people that make the difference. And I went to recycling this past weekend, as I do once or twice a week, and it was really remarkable. The place is so clean and orderly and friendly, and if you add that to all the other departments, the people in City Hall, our police department, on and on and on, we've got a great city going here. And it's a great place to live, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention that there's a lot of good things about Windsocket, but especially those little people that do their day-to-day and maybe don't get enough praise, that give them a smile, because I just got blown away. I've seen it clean, and it's never been horribly bad, but you almost felt like you could have an occasion there. Like if I had a child getting married, we could get married at recycling. It was so clean and neat, it was just unreal. So I hope I made people smile, but I'm one person that appreciates a lot of things that the administration and the city council brings to this city, and I thank you all for it. And good luck this election, because I'm pulling for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council?
Garrett Mansery, 372 Congress Street. I'll try to keep my comments brief, but I'm here to oppose the charter change question in regards to the appointment of the city solicitor. And my first comment is actually a question in terms of the Exhibit A. It says that the solicitor is going to be appointed by resolution of the city council and serve for a term concurrent with that of the mayor. And my question was, why would that not say city council if the city council is the appointing authority?
It's because the two run concurrent, so it was just leaving it, it's the same term as the city council, so it just, not to complicate the question, the intent is exactly the same.
I guess that's fine for now, but, you know, in the future, we may, you know, put another question out there that maybe the mayor should have a four-year term, so then that this question would have to get changed once again. So it's just something to think about in the future, that maybe it should just be the same as the appointing authority if this were to go through. But I just want to say that I have talked to a lot of people about this, and I think they really want the two branches of government to work together. You know, they don't want to see one appointing authority have way more control than the other one. And I always thought the city solicitor was a position that clearly works for both of them. They work for the administration that is sitting here, and they work for the legislative branch that is sitting there, and I just don't feel like that's right to have one branch have total authority over the legal, over the legal department. I want to point out that when I left the city council in 2016, the mayor put in an appointment of a city solicitor, and the city council rejected that. And that solicitor wasn't able to move forward because they didn't have the support of both branches of government. And I thought it was working fine up until this point, when, you know, the mayor indicated that she might want to make a change, and then the city council decided, well, we don't want that to happen, so therefore, we're going to have all the total control. And I just felt like that's not right. You know, it should be up to both branches to have that control and have that ability to appoint somebody that works with both people. I think you should not only respect the wishes of the mayor, but also the directors, you know? You've got directors sitting here that work at City Hall every single day, and I think to exclude them from the process is just not right. You know, they should have a say as to who they get to work with every day and making sure that they're, you know, getting their, their work done and accomplished. So, you know, we want a 40-hour work week for the city solicitor, and, you know, it's, if the current city solicitor or a future city solicitor can only do 10, 15, 20 hours, then they shouldn't be working in this position. Maybe they can do other things, and that's fine, but I think in Windsocket, I agree that we should have a 40-hour week city solicitor here, because their projects get the lead, legislation gets the lead, then I think the taxpayers lose in that situation. So, you know, when I left the city council, the cost to carry for the position of the city solicitor was $50,000 less than what it is today. And I think that's another reason why I think both branches should have some oversight as to, you know, who gets this position into the future. And this is nothing personal, by the way. I mean, this is talking about the positions and not necessarily the people. So in terms of, you know, there was some situations that happened that I feel like the solicitor should have spoke up in. During the budget process, the elected officials were given a increase, pay increase, which I don't object to, but obviously that can only go into effect when the terms expire, which is in December, not in July. Same goes for the signing of purchase and sales agreements, which I think, you know, should be done by, by the mayor, by the chief executive, not the city solicitor. You know, he already signed the, the purchase and sales agreement for the All Saints complex that's on the agenda for tonight, and I think that that shouldn't be signed until the public knows what that project is for and until the public votes are made. So you can have a executive session, obviously. I mean, I've been a part of those in the past, but I don't think anything should be signed until the public has a chance to weigh in on that. And same goes for, you know, police contracts. I think that that also should be signed by the chief executive, not by the city council president. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable when the city solicitor is given the opportunity to write an ordinance that affects his own personal position or her own position. I think that that probably should be done by outside council instead. So I think, you know, I think hopefully, you know, we can see the light and kind of do what the citizens want, which I think is work together. They want to elect people to the city council and to the office of mayor that not always agree, but at least can respect the positions that they have and give them an opportunity to work together. And I think if, you know, if it's a joint position, then they should have support of both administration and the city council. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to be clear with just one thing that was stated to make it perfectly clear, and that is that nobody that is an elected, in an elected position right now, is getting a dime of a raise. It goes into effect for fiscal year '23 in the budget that takes place or effective on July 1st, but the pay raises do not go into effect until the new election for the mayor as well as the city council. It is only for the next elected officials. So it does go into effect July 1st for that budget, but the pay raises do not become effective until the new election. Solicitor, you wanted to comment?
Well, I was going to just comment on what you just said.
Oh, sorry.
And secondly, there was some reference to last meeting about, you know, two hours a day. I don't know what other solicitors have done, but I can tell you I work much more than 40 hours a week. I take calls at 7:30 in the morning, weekends, many, many hours. I may only be in the building an hour or two, but my day starts at 7:30, 8 o'clock. You've all called me at that time on weekends, way, way more than 40 hours. So there was some reference to that before. I just want to make it clear, and anyone can call me on my cell phone, and I believe I'm the only solicitor that even comes into the, to the town hall. Most solicitors represent two or three towns. So I don't know what the future's going to hold. I don't even know if I want to be the solicitor next time, but I can tell you this, I work much, much more than two hours a day, and anyone who wants to be honest would know that. And, you know, I could see you got your talking points. That's great. I've been at this game a long time, so you read them very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council? Hearing none. We will move on to the consent agenda.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as submitted.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez and Councilman Ward and Sierra. Are there any items to be taken up separately from the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is received on a seven to zero vote as presented. Approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 11, 2022.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Canoia?
Yep.
To approve the minutes. Any corrections, changes? I had it? Yeah, let me see that, please. Thank you. It was the tabled resolution for the sale of 419... I'm sorry? 22037? 22. It was for the sale of 419 North Main Street.
I thought it was an ordinance. Yeah, I think it's an ordinance, 22037.
It was, it was an ordinance, 419. It was an ordinance.
Oh, Council President, I think I see what you're referring to.
What number is it?
Its ordinance is 22037, and it references...
Yes, thank you.
The...
Motion made by Councilman, and it's supposed to say Canoia. The name was omitted under who made the motion. And then it was seconded by Ward and...
Right, it just says made by Councilman, and it has black after that.
Yes. So 22037, if we can just add the original motion made by Councilman Canoia. Any other changes or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved as presented with the one change to 22037.
Council President?
Councilman Canoia?
I'd like to make a motion to move up 22R93 and 22R94 in connection with the ratification of the police contracts.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward to take out of order 22...
R93 and R94.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward to take out of order 22R93 and 22R94. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
22R93, ratifying the tentative agreements between New England Police Benevolent Association Local 808 and the city of Windsocket for terms 7/1/2020 to 6/30/2022 and 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2024.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia, seconded by Councilman Ward. Hearing none. All those in... Let's do a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susi?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22R93 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
22R94, authorization to sign First and Second Amendment to purchase and sale agreement for property located at 357 Park Place, Windsocket, Rhode Island.
Motion to approve?
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Canoia?
On page two, I'd like to just propose one amendment. Under Section 1, it says the city council agrees to the extension of time until Tuesday, until September 13th. They had asked for this a week and a half ago or so, and we're just getting to it now because of the way the schedule was. So I'd like to propose changing September 13th to September 27th. Just give them a few extra days so we're not back here again.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Ward to amend 22R94. Comments on the amendment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 22R94 is before us as amended, on the main motion as amended. Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And 22R94 is approved, seven to zero. If I could get a motion to take out of order 22040, because it also pertains to the police contract?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Sierra, seconded by Councilman Canoia, to take out of order 22040. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22040 is before us for second passage. Madam Clerk?
Authorizing the Windsocket City Council President or the mayor to execute the collective bargaining agreement by and between the city of Windsocket and the New England Police Benevolent Association, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
I just want to acknowledge the comments made earlier about authorizing you as a member of the city council to execute a collective bargaining agreement. And I would, I would simply say that under normal circumstances, this shouldn't be necessary, but the mayor made it clear to this council that based upon the offer that was subsequently accepted tentatively by the union, she had no intention of signing the contract, if it were to come to that. And so this was put in simply as a response to the fact that the mayor expressed her objection to the settlement at that time. And as a precaution, we have to have someone available. I suppose we could simply pass an ordinance ordering the mayor to sign on behalf of the city, but I think it's, it's a more productive way to accomplish the end by putting it on there so that either or party, either party could sign on behalf of the city under the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Canoia?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sierra?
Yes.
Councilman Susi?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22040 is approved, seven to zero. Second passage. Moving back to the regular order of business, I would like to move on to presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrances.
22P25, request of Councilman Gillette to address the city council regarding the Windsocket Dog Park.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have one point that I'd like to make, and Mr. D'Agostino is not here, so Michael, if you don't mind taking this. I had a constituent call my home and complained that his dog got stung by a bee, and it's, he blames it because those little white flowers that bees like, they're, you know, soon as the grass starts to grow, they, you know, they come up only about so high. And he was talking to other people that go there often, like he does, and the problem is occurring with other people. Evidently, there were two or three others that had their dog that got stung. So he's asking if there could be some sort of remedy to take care of that, and possibly when those little flowers come out, to mow the lawn more often so that those flowers are gone and the bees will be gone automatically.
So I'll take, I'll take down the information. Director D'Agostino is away this week, but the, I can tell you that our office and Public Works has not received one complaint about that dog park since we opened it. So this is the first that we're hearing that there's, that there's an issue down there with, with the possibility of bees, so we'll look, we'll look into it.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. 22P26, request of Councilman Canoia to address the city council regarding the following items. One, status of stipend and health care audit pursuant to resolution 22R81.
Council President, before we go further on that, I'd like to make a motion to add three items for discussion purpose only pursuant to 4246B. Number one, water and sewer bills. Number two, financial reports. And number three, rise prep mayoral academy.
Motion made by Councilman Canoia?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Gillette to add for discussion purposes only three items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Councilman Canoia?
Thank you. I'll cover those at the end. Appreciate that from your indulgence. First thing, status of the stipend and health care audit pursuant to resolution 22R81. The mayor's not here, however, I still feel compelled to address this once again because of what I've heard in the public domain and in the media. So just to clarify for the public, and frankly, for the mayor's benefit, the audit of the stipends, the stipend payments and certain other matters is being conducted at the direction of the city council, not at the direction of the mayor's office. The city council up here. And at this point, the city auditors are simply gathering facts, and they'll provide a report to the council. Once we get that report, the council will look at it and make an assessment and determine if there's any further action that's required. That may be the end of it. Or the council may decide that more activity has to occur, such as, for example, hiring a law firm such as Waylon Corenti and Flanders, like the Windsocket Housing Authority did, but that decision to hire outside legal counsel to conduct a, quote, "investigation of sorts" will be made by the city council, not by the mayor's office. I think there's some confusion there. But at this point, and again, this is more for the mayor, any talk about outside counsel, Bob Corenti, or anybody else, it's premature. Okay? As we said before, there have been no allegations, no assertions. We're just in a fact gathering mode. The other thing is, contrary to what, again, what was suggested by the mayor, this is indeed similar. Not the same, but similar. They're two different words. Look them up. But it's very similar to what happened at the housing authority. The Windsocket Housing Authority's auditors did an audit and provided the board of commissioners with an audit report. The board of commissioners of the housing authority then determined that bringing in Attorney Corenti to conduct an investigation was in order. Okay? Contrary to some of the spin, Mr. Corenti was brought in after the audit was completed. He was not there to oversee the audit, and he was not there during the audit. Came in after the fact, and whether or not we cross that bridge remains to be seen. Also, the housing authority's executive director, who is effectively the same as the chief executive officer of the city, hired legal counsel, outside legal counsel, but that was on his dime, not the housing authority's. So this notion that the city's going to go out and hire Mr. Corenti or anybody else at this juncture is just silly. The following are some excerpts from the Valley Breeze articles regarding compensation payments made to housing authority employees that were not authorized by the housing authority's board of commissioners, which in part led to the termination of three longtime employees. And I'm going to quote out of some of the press reports. Quote, "The misconduct was brought to the board of commissioners' attention when an audit found evidence of, quote, 'unauthorized pay increases.'" That's from the Valley Breeze in April, April 14, 2022. Another quote, "Moncom outlined three situations of non-compliance. The third instance of non-compliance payroll changes included four unauthorized increases. Moncom found no evidence that these pay increases were approved by the board of commissioners." Quote, "The third incident of misconduct cited by the investigative report pertain to unauthorized merit increases without seeking board of commissioner approval." Another quote, "In her employment termination letter, which was acquired by the Valley Breeze, merely cited charges that began the investigation, including knowledge of unauthorized pay So yes, it is similar. We've had employees that have had compensation payments outside of that which was approved by the city council via ordinance, not dissimilar to compensation payments made at the housing authority that were not approved by the board of commissioners. And again, we're, we're just in the, we're just getting facts at this point, but to suggest it's not similar and, you know... The other thing is, in the event that a, let's say, a local media mogul asks the question, this is not about gotcha. It's not about politics. It's not about the silly season, as some have alleged. It's about the city council doing their job, no different than the mayor's handpicked board of commissioners at the housing authority doing their job. I don't recall the mayor or anybody else suggesting that what happened at the housing authority with the board of commissioners and the work they did was somehow political and unwarranted and so forth. All right? When the city has hard-working employees and they reach out to members of the council and make them aware that it appears, and I emphasize the word appears, that there are certain select few individuals getting extra payments above and beyond that which was authorized by the city council, we have an obligation to follow up and look into it. So again, it's not about gotcha, for those radio hosts that like to say that. It's not about politics. I don't care what time of season it is. If this comes to us, we have to respond, and we are responding. And we're having an audit done. We're in the fact gathering mode at this point, and frankly, those people need to be, the auditors need to be left alone. The finance director needs to be left alone to do her job and provide the information without interfering. to be left alone to do her job and provide the information without interference on the fourth floor. Frankly, I'm reminded of a Shakespeare play where certain people doth protest too much. So leave it at that for now. And again, we'll let the audit go through the process, see where it goes. It may go nowhere, it may go somewhere. We don't know at this point. So I hope that helps clarifies some of that nonsense that we've heard on the, on the public airwaves. Second item, property tax assessment appeals and related legal fees. I have a question for the solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, when did you start with the city? Was it early two thousand seventeen, January?
January of two thousand seventeen.
Yeah. Yep. And if you recall, I had asked you at the time, you came in, you were new, we had a former solicitor that was not reappointed, not, not accepted by the council, and I had asked you for a list of all the cases that were outstanding, and you provided me one. And I don't expect you to see it from there, but you gave me a list.
I do remember providing you the list.
Okay. And included on that list were, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, related to tax appeals. This is before you came on, prior to you assuming the role of solicitor. So we had on this list, and I'm assuming it was complete, maybe it wasn't complete, you were, this is in your first few weeks, but we had a number of tax appeals, and they, seven out of eight of them were being handled by outside counsel, including people like Mr. McElroy and Associates.
Actually, that list wasn't prepared by me, it was prepared by Solicitor Marcello.
Oh, okay.
It's his draft.
Oh, okay. Well, that's interesting, because my next question was, how do I say this? Would it be a fair statement if the former solicitor, not you, but the former solicitor said, let's say on the radio, for example, or in a conversation with a member of the council, that something to the effect that tax appeals were handled in-house compared to now? You don't have to answer that question, I think I know what the answer is. It would be a false statement, it would be a little bit dishonest. So, okay, but thank you. I appreciate that. Third item, May Baldelli's statement at the July eleventh city council meeting wherein she stated, "I'm not an idiot." Look, I felt compelled to address this because at the last council meeting on July eleventh, a couple of weeks ago, it got a little bit heated towards the end of the meeting, wasn't the end of the meeting, but, and the mayor said, "I'm not an idiot," and then kind of all hell broke loose, and she ended up picking up her stuff and leaving early. And before I go on any further, I just want to make it very, very clear to the world here. The word idiot came out of only two people's mouths, the mayor and her public safety director. No member of the city council ever uttered the word idiot. Came out of the mayor's mouth and out of her public safety director's mouth. No one up here said the word idiot. That being said, as you all know, I have occasion to agree with the mayor and I have occasion to disagree with her, and that's fine. In this case, I agree with her. The mayor is not an idiot. The problem, however, where I think we run into these issues is in the area of honesty. And I heard the solicitor mention that word tonight, it's very interesting. He said, "If someone's going to be honest, I don't work two hours a week," and I think anybody up here knows that. There's this, there's this, there's this fiction out there that nobody up here does anything and nobody ever discusses anything with the solicitor or tries to get things done. But the word honesty, and I think that's frankly where the mayor gets herself in trouble, and being, being dishonest and deceitful, and I don't say that lightly, but why do I say that? I'll give you some examples. The mayor had a year to prepare a budget, okay? A whole year to prepare a budget, and she did. This is the budget she prepared, and she submitted it to the city council at the end of May. That's her proposed budget. That budget comes to the city council, and then after a public hearing, after reviewing it individually, after having a joint meeting with the school committee, which, by the way, the mayor and or anybody else on her staff attended that meeting, the joint meeting with the school committee, this council made some very modest amendments to the budget. Okay? We increased the contingency two hundred and sixteen thousand plus dollars to cover certain contracts that are outstanding and need to be settled. We increased, we provided the, the school department with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional appropriation. We haven't given them an additional appropriation in a number of years. We restored to senior services the funding that we had last year, we kept it flat, but the mayor had reduced it, we simply restored it. We provided salary increases, we put the election services back in, we provided thirty thousand dollars to the library for a book budget, and then we had some net decreases. Total was five hundred and eight thousand dollars. That resulted in a four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollar increase in the tax levy, less than four hundred and ninety thousand, which was a zero point nine percent increase, zero point nine percent increase in the levy, less than one percent. After six years of consecutive decreases in the levy, we had the unmitigated gall to increase the levy by four hundred, less than four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, not even one percent, less than zero point nine percent. So what did the mayor do? She vetoed it. And that's her right, there's nothing wrong with that. But she vetoed all the changes that the city council made. However, where the dishonesty came is that in vetoing all the changes, the council said she had to because it was one amendment, she didn't veto individual line items, even though, even though the amendment that was passed unanimously by the council had individual line items, and even though the mayor, and I discussed it that night, has previously, including last year, and in two thousand eighteen and other years, vetoed individual line items on the same amendment, we've been doing this type of amendment for the last five years, this is the sixth year, and the mayor's absolutely vetoed individual line items, but she said, "Oh, I had to veto the whole thing because there was one amendment." No, be honest. In her message, she also said, "Increase property taxes five hundred and eight thousand five seventy-three." Not true, we increased it four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, not five oh eight five seventy-three. Also in the veto message, which she referred to as the Canoia budget, as opposed to the council's amended budget, she said the Canoia budget had two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for cruiser purchases and five thousand for computers for the fire department. In fact, that was the mayor's budget that had that, and the city council didn't make any amendments in connection with that. So it had nothing to do, it was completely irrelevant to the veto. Okay? Just misinformation, not being honest. But most importantly, where we ran into the problems which led to the "I'm not an idiot" comment, which was unfortunate, was the mayor's whole budget veto message in her, in her remarks at both the meeting and outside the meeting to the public, she made a big deal over the fact that the city council increased the levy to cover the costs of the aforementioned operating expenses. Money, money for the school after having no increase for a number of years, salary increases after being told we lose people because we don't pay enough, not because it's a toxic work environment, but because we don't pay enough, books for the library, et cetera. And the big argument was that we should have used the opera funds, we didn't have to increase the appropriation in the levy, we should have used the opera funds. Fair enough, that's a fair argument, we can have that discussion and we, that's a fair debate to have, and I think we all know where we ended up. The problem is, the dishonesty, in my opinion, is that we later got to a resolution later in the meeting wherein the administration was asking for authority to go spend up to a million dollars for new water buildings, a garage and office space for the water department, up to a million dollars. And we said, "Well, where's the money going to come from? Opera?" No, no, it's not coming from opera, it's going to come from the enterprise fund. What? And Councilman Ward, you know, chuckled, appropriately so, at the, at the absurdity, at the hypocrisy. Okay? So just to put some numbers to this, the city council was roundly criticized by the mayor, which is fine, for increasing the appropriation of the levy by four hundred and eighty-nine thousand plus dollars, zero point nine percent increase on a fifty-four plus million dollar levy. Yet, this council passed an ordinance, a budget ordinance, at the request of the administration for the water appropriation. And the water appropriation went from nine point eight million to ten point two million, went up three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So we approved a three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar increase in the water department appropriation, a three point six percent increase, four times, three point six, if you can do math, is four times the rate of increase that we did for the levy. And we were just, we were the worst people, oh, we're hurting the poor taxpayers that are struggling. We're going to put them over the edge. Yet, we have a water budget that increases the appropriation by four times, three point six percent versus our zero point nine, they increased it three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and they could have had it easily half a million dollars less, but they intended to use up to a million dollars out of that enterprise fund for a building, for the water department, as opposed to the opera. You can't have it both ways. And that's what the councilman was just shaking his head at, which led to the bruhaha. Okay? Be honest, don't criticize the council, or if you're going to criticize, that's perfectly fair to criticize the council and have that position, criticize the council all you want, but be honest and be consistent. Don't suggest that we're, we're, we're doing bad because we're putting normal operating expenses, annual type operating expenses, appropriately back into the budget, restoring the senior center funding that was taken away, putting the books back in, giving the school department a very modest increase after many years without one. Don't criticize us for not using opera funds for that, for operating expenses, while at the same time using the enterprise fund and increasing the water appropriation by three point six percent, as opposed to using opera for something that frankly, opera is more appropriate for, one-time kind of unique infrastructure-type projects, building an office space for the water department. So, look, the mayor is not an idiot, I'm going to be very clear about that, but neither are we, and neither is the public. And if we want to act like we're idiots, that's what's going to happen, it's going to get ugly, and it doesn't need to be. The mayor's not an idiot, but if she learned to work with us in a more productive and constructive way, you know, again, the mayor had a year to prepare a budget and submit it to us, and she did at the end of May, she didn't, she did not request one meeting with the city council to review and discuss the budget. And ultimately, her veto was overridden, not five to two, but six to one, and for good reason. So, so that's that, and I apologize for having to take you down, down that path.
Before you go on to your other items, two, two things for clarification, I just want to be very clear, when Councilman Canoia is speaking about enterprise fund, who totally funds the enterprise fund?
I write three checks to the city of Wensocket. I write one for my taxes, I write one for my water, and I write one for my city. I don't care if you want to call it a tax, a water bill, or a sewer bill, it's coming out of the quote overstressed residents of this city. So you can't, you can't have it both ways, it's that simple.
And the other item, thank you for that clarification, the other item is, when you were talking about the former solicitor, you made a comment and you asked the solicitor a question, and then after that, you said, "You don't have to answer that," but I was called down by somebody who is paying attention and is here and being part of city government, and he would like an explanation of that answer, when you said, "You don't have to answer it." He would like to know what you were referring to.
Well, I simply said hypothetically, if the former solicitor picked up the, picked up his phone and called, say, a radio station and spoke to a city council member and said that when they were the solicitor, tax appeals were handled in-house, and now, under the current solicitor, we use outside counsel, I would suggest that that's not at all accurate. In fact, I have a list, seven out of eight of the tax appeals were being handled by outside counsel, that's all.
Now, just to, to clarify what you were getting at.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next item, under forty-two forty-six B, water bills and sewer bills. You're on.
Okay.
So we haven't, just give me a second, it's, it's July twenty-fifth, we're heading into August, Director, and we have not seen a water bill or a sewer bill, typically they come out in March. I'll speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure everybody else up here has been getting phone calls from constituents. And before you answer, let me just, I want to share with you what my understanding is, and then you can fill in the blanks. Back in January of two thousand twenty, the city council passed a resolution to engage Vision Government Solutions to put in a new system for the collection of water and sewer bills. And here we are in July, and it's still being, still work being done. So here's the deal, I will tell you, I've been involved in systems implementations in the finance area, I'm sure Councilman Ward can opine on this as well, they're not always easy, and they don't always go as planned. So I fully understand that there are challenges, and I'm putting this on, Director, not to wag a finger at you, but just to make sure that people understand where we are, and I will tell you where my frustration is, and it's not with you or your department, because again, I am very well aware that these type of things, there's always glitches, we need only look at the state, when former, former Governor Gina Raimondo put in a new system with, I think it was Deloitte, and they had all kinds of issues and went way, way over budget and the time, et cetera. So not a criticism for you, here's my criticism, however, and again, the mayor's not here. I know the mayor is very good, very adept at issuing press releases when she wants to pat herself on the back. Okay? We put in new playground equipment, we got a grant, we're knocking a building down. It's pretty clear that the administration knows how to communicate when they want to communicate. This is the type of situation where a press release should have gone out months ago, just advising the public, advising the ratepayers, here's where we are, your bills are going to be late, here's the reason why, we're working through a transition, here's an estimated time with no guarantee will keep you apprised, don't worry, you're not going to get penalties, et cetera. Some kind of a very simple communication to the public about what the situation is so they understand it, and they're not sitting here thinking, "Did I miss a bill? Am I going to get whacked with fees?" Because we do, we charge people with fees, we charge people interest, I guess some people, if they have interest charges, some, some people might get those relieved if they know somebody, but the, the, the point is, we, the city, hold people to standards, you've got to pay by X date or you get penalized. Well, I'm not saying we're holding the administration to a standard about getting these bills out if there's problems, that's fine, that, that stuff happens, crap happens, and I get it. But we need to communicate and let people know, because people out there, again, you've got people, A, that think they've missed the bill, and they're stressed out, thinking they're going to get, end up on some type of a penalty list, you have, B, you have people that are not paying attention at all, and they're going to be blindsided when they get these bills that are, you know, they normally got four, five, six months ago. So the message is, please, and this isn't for you, Chris, it's for the administration, you should try to communicate when there's challenges as equally or as well as you communicate when you're patting yourself on the back. Okay? So I'll leave it at that. If, if I have that wrong in terms of where we are, it's, it's, it's the integration and transition to the new.
Correct.
And we were a beta site to help develop it.
Correct. So I just want to let everyone know that they were dropped at the post office today. There, there will be an insert in the bill, the bill date, the due date will be August fifteenth. The next billing will be, will be a larger bill than you would normally see. the next billing will be, will be a larger bill than you would normally see, and the due date, I believe, will be October third, but I can send the council all a copy.
Send us that, but also, again, I think the administration, I don't know who's taking notes for the mayor here, but she should gin up one of her press, press releases and get that out, what you just said, just so people know and understand, particularly if you're gonna have a disconnect or a distortion where this, the first quarterly bill is gonna be, I don't wanna say artificially, but for lack of a better term, artificially lower than normal, and then it, there's a catch-up in October or something, just so people can understand and plan, so.
Okay.
So, thank you, Chris, I appreciate it. And, and again, I get what's going on, it's not easy, so, it's not a, it's not a criticism to you, it's, it's a communication issue, so. Same thing with financial reports, again, it's, it's, it's you, but, no, no, hang on, settle down. You know, I read where the mayor said, when she was criticizing the council recently about the stipend audit, she said, "She has an obligation as mayor to make certain government is functioning correctly." Impressive words. So, she's not here, but I wanted to ask her how she's, how she's making sure the government is functioning correctly when there's been no financial reports since November. And it's not a question for you, it's a question for the mayor, but she's not here. Rice Prep, Mayoral Academy, I'll ask the planning director, since no one else is here, I noticed there's construction going on at Rice Prep, can you just update us and the public, what's, it's a public school, I'm told, so can you just give us a, an update?
They have a permit to put in the foundation, and the permits for the rest of the building are still under review.
Okay. And, I heard a rumor, and I don't know if it's true, so I'm just gonna ask you, is the administration, anybody in the administration, planning department, finance, anywhere else, working on getting some type of grant funding to purchase and knock down and displace some homes around the Boys and Girls Club to create parking?
The, the, the old racquetball club?
Yeah.
The new Boys and Girls?
Yeah, the new Boys and Girls Club.
There's nothing through my office on any of that, no, sir?
No. So there's no seeking like twelve million dollars of grants or anything like that for...
I just said, just through my office, there's nothing for grants on that.
Okay, okay. You would know, because most of the grants go through your office, so I appreciate that.
That is correct.
Yep. That's it for me, thank you.
Twenty-two P twenty-seven, request of President Gendron to address the city council for discussion purposes regarding the stipend and healthcare audit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Councilman Canoyer covered most of what I was going to address in regards to the stipend and healthcare audit, but just to be clear, this is nothing more than an independent audit, which was, here's the thing, if we don't do an independent audit and have the facts collected independently, then it's viewed as political. So, this council took the very prudent action of hiring our regular auditors, the ones that we trust for the rest of the year, to do any auditing that we need, we hired them to do an independent audit. But I will just say, I've been in communication with the principals of that audit firm, and they are growing concerned with the lack of information that they're acquiring from City Hall. And, the first communication goes back to July eleventh, where they're requesting a lot of information that is, in their opinion, very easily generated, but they're not getting any of those documents. And, I just don't wanna see this turn into an unnecessary burden, because the auditors are wasting their time waiting for documents that should be easily available. And it's unfair to put those unnecessary burdens on the taxpayers or the residents of the city, because they're not able to get those documents. So I hope, and again, Director, this is not even aimed at you, I hope that those documents will break free soon, so the independent audit can begin, and they can turn over the facts, because that's all they're doing, is collecting facts. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Counsel, can I speak?
Director, yes.
We received that, the request for information, but I, there was a question whether that work fell outside the scope of what the normal audit and single audit are, so that's why we had the question for the city solicitor.
And are you comfortable with the answer?
He did.
Are you, are you comfortable with the answer to proceed?
I'm comfortable with the answer the city solicitor gave.
Thank you.
So.
I will, I will let, I will let the auditor know that, that you've been given the green light, if there was anything holding you back, and I, and I don't mean to put you in the middle of that, believe me. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business of previous meetings.
Twenty-two oh thirty-six, placing on the ballot for the general election to be held on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two, a question amending the City of One Socket Home Rule Charter to allow the city council to appoint the city solicitor.
Motion to pass.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments?
Council President.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. On June, on the June twentieth meeting, Councilman Gillette introduced his ordinance, and he stated that, ever since a city solicitor in the past publicly stated that, as far as he was concerned, he was part of the Fontaine administration, that was something that had bothered him, and he wanted to make sure that something was done, so that nothing like that would ever happen again. Upon my research, I actually was able to find that on February sixteenth of two thousand nine, there was an ordinance that was introduced, zero-nine-point, oh-point-one-six, that was mainly authored by, at the time, Council President Leo Fontaine, and co-sponsored by Councilman Ward. And in this, this was an ordinance to put in the ballot a change in charter, to be able to address this very situation. So I was surprised to find out that this was something that, the way that it was introduced previously, it seemed to me like it was an issue that was never addressed, but it was unanimously passed, the first passage was on February sixteen, two thousand nine, and at that time, the, the council, there was a motion made by Council Ward that was seconded by Council Schneck, that the order, when, in order for the ordinance to pass for the first time, and upon motion of President Fontaine, there was a seconded by Councilman Gillette, it was voted that the ordinance be amended by inserting in section two and proposal of the last line, which is mayor and/or city council, which means, not only did, did something take place, but two of some of the authors of what is in existence right now in our charter came from part of this very council. So, when we, when we say that, or when I heard that, that that was part of the reason why we wanted to bring a, a change in the charter, it, I was really surprised to find all this information. I also found a publication in the Valley Breeze on October two thousand nine, it was a press release by Councilman Ward, it states as follows, "As anyone watching the city government operate for the last several years has seen, the mayor has been able to drive her agenda through a solicitor who has been more concerned with continued employment than with the law," said Ward. "He has discounted the point of view of the city council at the instruction of the mayor on every matter for which there was a disagreement. Though we can all expect the past not to repeat itself under a new administration, the people of One Socket need to establish some protection from the possibility of a repeat at some point in the future." Ward, Ward said that the question one will balance the control over the solicitor position, so that the interests of the entire city will come before the self-interest of any mayor or city council. "The solicitor can serve the law and the citizens of One Socket without fear of being fired without cause by the mayor," he said. So for me, it's clear that, that this is an attempt to secure the employment of a solicitor whom the majority, if not all, of the city council deems in high regard, and I wanna make it clear that when it comes to our current solicitor, in the term that I have been elected in this office, he has been nothing but helpful to me and available for anything that I've ever needed, and I don't have any issues whatsoever with our current solicitor. But when we talk about the charter, the changes that are put in place are put in place for the protection of future generations, and we can't make these decisions based on the faces that we see before us. I think time, especially these last couple of years, has proven that no one is guaranteed to even be here, or for the next term, we're close to being, to going back into election. We don't know who's going to be sitting in these seats. So when we approach charter changes, we have to approach it without the face of our current solicitor, or our current mayor, or any one of these city councilors, but we have to, take our wording has to be so that it protects, so, so that our city is protected from any relationship between a mayor and a solicitor, or a city council and a solicitor that would not have the best interest in mind for the, for the city. So the proposed changes, I believe, would bring back, would revert back to an imbalance of power that maybe might benefit us for a short term, if we're able to keep the current city councillor, but it does not protect the city for long-term interest. So it is important for us to take into consideration, the last time I focused a lot on the language of it, and putting it before the people, but I didn't realize it had already gone before the people. And this matter had been discussed and resolved through the current, the current ordinance that we have to bring about that balance, and it surprised me that the same people that were part of authoring this charter, the way it's written in the charter, are the people who are bringing forth the, the changes that would revert back, except now it would be city council versus the administration, the imbalance that they were trying to bring from the beginning. That's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Ward.
Thank you, Council President, I'm glad Councilwoman Gonzalez brought up my comments from some time ago, it was good to hear that my opinion about the role of the solicitor has not changed in all this time, and the words I spoke then are the same words I spoke a couple of weeks ago. The solicitor's job is to serve the needs of the city, not the needs of the council or the mayor. And to speak to what brought about the action so many years ago, I would have to characterize it as nothing more or less than what could only be considered an abuse of an authority for the mayor to unilaterally appoint the solicitor as a quote-unquote "director" to serve at the pleasure of the mayor, and just, just to have a solicitor described in the charter as serving at the pleasure of the mayor is inconsistent with quality government, period. You can't serve at the pleasure of a person if you're supposed to be serving the interests of the city under the law. So, because of what could only be considered abusive appointments, and appointments that were not in the best interest of the city, it triggered the response of the council to put the question before the voters, who agreed that we would be able to protect a solicitor from wanton dismissal by a mayor on a whim, through a requirement that there be council, council vote of, majority vote for dismissal, as well as giving the council an authority to remove a solicitor if the solicitor's actions were so egregious that five members felt that the, the solicitor was not representing the city, not the council or the mayor, but the city, appropriately. Or, as has been alleged, which isn't true, is not actually working hard enough for the city. On that matter, whenever I have contacted the solicitor, he has been responsive to me, both affirmatively and negatively, if I was, if I was asking something that was not possible, I would get a clear response as to why not, and if it was something that was possible, I would get a clear response as to why it was, and how we could approach addressing the issue. I heard earlier, and I'll make reference to the comments made earlier about, that former Councilman Mancieri made about somehow the council getting more control than the mayor, or the mayor having more control, this really isn't about control. If you are an administrator doing your job properly, and we are a council or a board doing its job properly, probably the, the single role played in city government over which nobody truly has control, or should have control, other than to bring something to the solicitor's attention, and maybe work with them to prioritize its importance in context with other items that the solicitor must deal with, is the solicitor. It's, it's a job that doesn't, it's not like the Public Works Director, where the Public Works Director operates under the direction of the mayor, and Public Works Director brings information to the, the mayor, and the mayor makes the decisions about what will take I don't think that's really the role of the solicitor, the solicitor is more to be a, a guide in how to properly deal with issues that have to be addressed by the city, and then also to defend the city in matters before it, and whether the council appoints, or the mayor appoints, or there's a combined relationship, it really should not be about control. As for his comments about there not being oversight over what the solicitor does, I have to beg to differ. I work in a community where the solicitor is appointed by the council. And in the town of Lincoln, when the council, when anyone in the administration contacts the solicitor, as a matter of fact, ninety-nine percent of the communications with the solicitor each day is from administration, even though he's appointed by the town council. His role, really with the town council, is to, as our solicitor does, his role there is to attend meetings and advise the council on actions that are taken at the meeting, or associated with agenda items that are being placed on the agenda for that consideration. And he also does the zoning meetings, attends those meetings, and has to address issues and questions that come before either the planning board or the zoning board, and deal with that. And the rest of his, the rest of his billing beyond his pay is different than we have here, because his billing for anything outside of those two roles of the council advisor and the zoning meetings are billed at a agreed-upon hourly rate, discounted municipal rates, like so many lawyers have across the state, and those are the matters that the administration generally deals with, having to do with litigation or disputes, things of that nature. But he has to be responsive to the administration, and if he were not responsive to the administration, we would inform the council, if it was so egregious, and let them make a decision about whether it was appropriate to replace that solicitor, because they were not responsive to the needs of the administration, or as would be the case, and the needs of the city. So, it's not that it's, it's not that there's no oversight, it's simply that the oversight is, is there. is there, the accountability is still all there. So this question really is more about the same question that arose back when we first made the change from the solicitor to serving at the pleasure of the mayor, to being an appointment subject to ratification, because of circumstances that are occurring, and the risk that if we have a solicitor whose term extends only up to the point of our inauguration, and the mayor has not brought us a solicitor candidate to consider, then in theory, we could be without a solicitor for a period of time. It was never something I ever thought would be possible to consider, because it would be so irrational and make so little sense, until recently. Just as I had never thought the solicitor in the past would be such a challenge to get somebody who was not operating under the constant fear of being thrown out the door, sort of like being a tax assessor in Wunsaket these days, to where we have to think about the possibility that we might not have a solicitor appointee. And so because of those circumstances, and because of what the public and the voters watch go on here, I think it's not a bad idea to put this question before them. I'm not going to tell them what to think, or tell them how to vote. I'd ask them to analyze this in their own best interests as residents and voters, and make their decision, and cast their ballot, and we will live with whatever comes out of it. Because we're not making the decision, we're simply offering the voters a choice, and when they make a decision, we will abide by it. And that's why I'm supporting giving the people a choice. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Thank you.
Councilman Canoia.
So first, for the record again, we discussed it the last time, solicitor, legal opinion, is this ordinance that is before us and what we're doing legal?
Absolutely.
Okay. And does it violate the Constitution?
No.
Okay. The mayor indicated she was going to get legal counsel, check with the Attorney General for balance of power and constitutional issues. Do you know if she's done that yet?
I have no idea.
Okay. But it's legal, all right. Couple of things. Councilwoman Gonzalez, to your points, and I appreciate the extra work you did in pulling that stuff together, so a few points. Number one, that ordinance, '09-'16, back in 2009, the question on the ballot simply was, shall a proposal to amend Chapter 10, Article 1 relating to the Law Department be adopted? Didn't get into the minutia about appointed by the mayor, subject to approval of the council, et cetera. Very simple, very high level, similar to what we have here, and that's just kind of addressing some of the concerns last week about the language. Similarly, the ordinance for the school committee back in 2012, the question was, shall the City of Wunsaket Home Rule Charter be amended to provide for an appointed school committee? It didn't say appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council, which is what the ultimate language was. 2018, when we put it back on the docket, back on the ballot, rather, to go from an appointed back to an elected, it said, the question was, shall the City of Wunsaket Home Rule Charter be amended to provide for a five-person school committee, of which members are to be elected by the qualified electors? It didn't say change from appointed by the mayor with city council approval to elected. It was very concise and short. But similar to the 2009 ballot question, we had a ballot question in 2012 that called for an appointed school committee, and I think you remember.
Mm-hmm.
And then a few years later, the world changed, and people felt differently, and they put it back on the ballot. So it's not unusual, it's interesting that in 2009, they made a change, and they made a very comprehensive change. It was, as you said, appointed by the mayor with approval from the council, and then there was a bunch of removal provisions. And again, I go back to having honest discussions. And what the mayor had said at the last meeting, reported in the press, unfortunately, she said that this is a charter change where all the power of appointing the solicitor or removing the solicitor will come from the city council without any input from the administration. In fact, that's absolutely false. There are no changes whatsoever to the removal provisions. But that doesn't stop people from just peddling spin. What this does is it gives the city council the authority to appoint the solicitor, and whoever the solicitor is, they are the legal advisor for the city of Wunsaket. They're not Jim Canoia's legal advisor, they're not Valerie Gonzalez's, or David Sucey's, or Mayor Lisa Baldelli Hunt's personal advisor. They work for the city of Wunsaket. They're a legal advisor. And I'm going to be very frank here, what the mayor wants is a chief of staff, okay? We all know that. She wants a chief of staff, she wants, we had a solicitor once that frankly was a frustrated legislator down in Providence, and he used to sit in that chair and spend all his time trying to be the eighth councilman up here, giving policy advice, not legal advice. And we discussed that last week, where the mayor said, quote, "For someone like our solicitor who's been in politics a very long time, how he has no comment on this, and how he feels this is the right thing to do, and to bring this imbalance forward is a point that I think needs to be taken note of." Again, what's before us has got nothing to do with the guy sitting in that chair. This was put in, the two sponsors are Councilman, Vice President Councilman Ward and Councilman Roger Gillette, not the solicitor. It's got nothing to do with him, per se. And this slimy way of trying to make it personal and making assertions that this is about protecting his job, suggesting that he works two hours a day and all this other nonsense is disgusting. Again, the solicitor is a legal advisor for the city. Now if anybody up here, the removal provisions are not changing one iota, but does anybody up here think that any one of us individually can remove the solicitor? No. But when it comes time to appoint, the way it is structured right now, you've got one person that could hold the whole thing up. And as I said the last time, I'm repeating myself, but it's another meeting, and I'm not afraid to repeat. If everybody up here but me thinks the current solicitor's doing a great job, I can't hold it up. There's six members up here, they can put his name forward, and we're all going to vote. Alternatively, if the mayor doesn't think he's doing a good job and suggests that he's working two hours a week, which is just nonsense, she can hold it up. That's a problem. Again, there seems to be this desire to have a chief of staff, someone to talk policy with. His job is to give legal advice, and I think if we're all honest, we've been forced to get legal opinions a couple of times from the solicitor, that essentially, he said, "Yes, Mayor, you have to follow the charter. Yes, Mayor, you have to follow and enforce ordinances." And that was very frustrating to the mayor. When we did it with the CDBG ordinances, and he said, "Yep, it's an ordinance, you know, you've got to follow it, it's an ordinance." I'm going to get, I'm going to get a legal opinion. Well, that never happened, because no attorney's going to say otherwise. And we have a mayor that gets frustrated and lashes out, because this guy here is not a policy advisor, instead he tries to give sound legal advice, and frankly, we have people that don't fully understand, or don't read, or can't read the city charter and their ordinances. You quoted the Valley of Breeze. I'll quote the Valley of Breeze, and I think this gets to the nub of the problem, and here's, Councilwoman Gonzalez, you said back in June, you said, quote, "Personally, I think it's important that any administration has the opportunity to choose their team." And that's the problem, with all due respect, and I know you didn't mean it, I'm not trying to be difficult, but he's not on a team. He's an independent arbiter that interprets the law and gives legal advice. He's not part of the mayor's team, he's not part of Jim Canoia's team, or Valerie's team, or Dan's team. He is the city solicitor giving legal advice, and we saw very clearly, I'm going to quote it again, the mayor, in her mind, thinks it needs to be taken note of, that the solicitor has been in politics a very long time, how he has no comment on this, and how he feels this is the right thing to do, and to bring this imbalance forward is a point that I think needs to be taken, he's not bringing anything forward, and it's, his political view is wholly irrelevant. To even suggest that is so outside the realm. And that's the notion of being on a team. He's not on a team. He's the city's solicitor, not the council's solicitor, not the mayor's solicitor. So the council will appoint the solicitor if this passes, and everybody's going to have to work with the solicitor that gets appointed. And oh, by the way, there's not one, there's not two, and there's not three people up here that can control that. It takes a consensus of at least four to appoint the solicitor. And no one person, or two people, or three people up here can hold us up from appointing a solicitor, whereas one person over there, if they don't like the fact that the solicitor doesn't give a policy opinion on something that's, he has no business giving us a policy opinion on, that they get their nose out of joint, they say, "Oh, I'm not going to reappoint you." There'll be no harm to the city if this passes. I think I heard Mr. Mancieri speak earlier tonight, he talked about, "Give the people what they want." Well, this is, the people will decide what they want. To coin a phrase, the people of Wunsaket are not idiots, they can make a decision, they can decide. Mr. Mancieri, who was again here earlier this evening and spoke on this matter, sent out a tweet that said, "This is a power grab to ensure that they have a solicitor that will rule in their favor." Power grab, rule in our favor? Again, there's seven people up here. The people have a problem, the removal provisions are not changing, despite what the mayor explicitly said, to the contrary. None of the removal provisions are being changed in the charter, simply rather than having the mayor appoint or nominate and the council approve, the council will just nominate and put a vote for whoever they think is the right person. So I don't think there's anything wrong with this at the end of the day, it's not going to change a lot, but what it's going to do is remove, how do I say it? It's going to remove the ability for pettiness to rear its ugly head. So when the solicitor issues a common sense legal opinion that says, "Yes, you have to follow the black letter law or the city charter," or, "Yes, you have to enforce an ordinance." You know why I know that? Because it says it right here in your duties, ma'am. It says, "Enforce ordinances, do as the council says via ordinance or resolution." And I know that's hard for some people to swallow and comprehend and accept, but it's not his fault that he's telling the truth. And again, I can't be more clear, this was put forward by the two people in the council here. It's got nothing to do with him, he didn't put this forward, I don't even know if he wants to serve again. So I will absolutely be supporting this, I don't think it's unreasonable at all, but again, ultimately, this is just putting it on the ballot so the people can decide, and people can go and peddle their narratives all they want, and we'll see where it all ends up. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Sucey.
Yeah. All rhetoric aside.
You pulled his mic close up.
Yeah, you bet.
I know, it was, um, because of more.
Yeah. All rhetoric aside, you're right, nothing changes for removal and all that stuff, but one major thing changes. We have a system that some would say is a perfect system, where both sides have a say in the appointment of the, choosing of a city solicitor. Every city in Rhode Island does that, every city in Rhode Island does that. There are towns that do not, and there are towns that do, and there probably have various reasons for that, but there is no other city that doesn't do it the way we do it right now. It was changed in 2009 because of the perceived abuse by a mayor at that time, right? What are we doing? We're going to go back now so that there could be a perceived abuse by the city council, because we're the only ones who have a say in the choosing of a solicitor? I mean, that's pretty much as simple as it is. I mean, again, there's, we could talk all day about the pros and cons, but right now we have a hybrid, where we allow the mayor to appoint, and then we have to agree to either approve that or not. That's a pretty perfect system, as far as I'm concerned. And to go back to something different where there could be abuse on our side, I cannot vote for that. I don't think, and again, I just feel bad that we have to even, this is, you know, when you do charter changes, I mean, I think Valerie hit it perfectly, we shouldn't be looking at a face tonight, we shouldn't be looking at the face of the mayor, the face of a solicitor, or the face of this current council. We're talking about changing something that's going to put us back in a position we didn't want to be in, in 2009, that we tried to get out of, and we did successfully get out of. When you have both potties with skin in the game, how do you, why do you want to get out of that? And I really am asking that for the council, I'm asking of the public. I mean, obviously tonight what's going to happen, and we're going to have to work very hard at educating the public as to why it would be a mistake to go back to something like that. When you have already something that gives us both sides a say, and you go back to something else in that, I think that's wrong, and I think it's going backwards, and I will certainly not vote for second passage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none?
I have one more.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Again, yes, this ordinance, the way that it's written, has worked for all these years, with the exception that we all feel that there's a possibility that someone who has served well might not get reappointed. But when we talked to Councilman Canoia, you made a reference to the ballot and the wording in the ballot, but I actually have before me the ballot for 2009, and it does say, "Shall a proposal to amend Chapter 10, Article 1 relating to the Law Department be adopted?" But it continues, "Approval of this question shall enact the amendment of the appointment of the city solicitor to be subject to the approval by a majority vote of the city council and amend the duties. A new Section 5 will provide a process of removal or discharge by either the mayor or the city council. The amendment would be effective upon passage, the form proposed by the ordinance 09-016, Chapter 7461, Sections 1, 2, and 5, passed by the city council on March 2, 2009." So it's not as simple as just putting the word, there is an explanation in the ballot that does, that that's where the wording should be, where, that it would change from solely being, from being appointed by the mayor, approved by the city council, to exclusively being chosen by the city council. So in all of these, when we talk about the simplicity of the question, yes, that is there, but there's a lot of detail that follows. And if it looks like this might be something that ends up in the ballot, if it does, my biggest thing, I have a trust in the people. I think, as a matter of fact, I think there's a lot of things that need to go before the people, but people need to have the right information and know exactly what they're voting on, and I think that the language that we have right now with the way that it's written is not enough to make people have a well-informed decision.
Thank you. Councilman Canoia.
So just briefly, no, you're correct, Councilwoman Gonzalez, it's exactly the same as what we have here. So what you reference, if you look at your ordinance from '09, right, same thing, Section 1, here's the question, and then what you referred to is all the stuff in the exhibit, Exhibit A, just like this has Exhibit A. Same thing, it's going to have this language, Exhibit A, just like that.
Well, when we spoke the last meeting, we talked about Exhibit A, and it was said...
You said it was going to be part of the, it's going to be in the...
Yeah, he said, yeah, it was said that, you know, maybe they could have something that, you know, people could read, but it needs to be like on the ballot.
Yeah. And I'm just telling you, the ordinance is identical, the question with Exhibit A, the question with Exhibit A. And then with respect to Councilman Sucey going back, well, it's a little bit of an overstatement, because as Councilwoman Gonzalez just noted, the charter change in '09 was comprehensive. Before, it was just the solicitor was appointed by the mayor, basically that was it. Then they changed it to the mayor, subject to approval by the council, and then they put in removal provisions, a whole host of removal provisions and certain duty requirements. All of that's, none of that's changing, we're not going back. The stuff that was done in '09, all of that stuff remains. We're not going back to what it was before '09, everything in... Everything in '09 remains the same, except for the one amendment about having the mayor be the person that appoints, subject to the council. That's the only piece. So it's not going back. There is a piece that is changing, and again...
I meant going back to the, where the, where the council had no voice. I meant going back to where the council had no voice. That's what I, I mean, where the mayor had, we had no voice, now they all have no voice. That's what I meant by going back.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay.
Councilman Conoye, I know you have the legislation there. Do you have the actual question that was on the ballot in 2009?
I just read it.
Not the exhibit?
No, I actually read it from the ballot.
Okay. All right. I just, so what you read was the actual question?
It's the actual ballot.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Conoye?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
No.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ciara?
Yes.
Councilman Susi?
Uh, no.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22036 is approved, five to two.
22038 authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a one-year lease extension with Agent Well, Inc. for property known as Assessors Plat 13, Lot 104, 84 Social Street.
Motion to pass.
Motion made by Councilman Gillette, seconded by Councilman Ward. Comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Conoye?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ciara?
Yes.
Councilman Susi?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22038 is approved, seven to zero. New business?
22041, in ordinance to remove the, to remove the project for fire hydrant painting and rehabilitation in the associated amount of $541,000 from the City of Wensocket's approved ARPA budget.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Councilman Conoye, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez, and Ciara?
Yes.
Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Conoye.
One que, uh, two questions. Director, it mentions in the fourth whereas that the city administration applied for and received $775,000 of congressionally directed spending award. So this is 541. What's going to happen with the balance?
So the program that we applied for, for the lead was the repainting of the fire hydrants and also to secure money to help residents change their lead water services.
Got it.
From the curb stop to the foundation, and they'll be applying for that. I think Director D'Agostino talked a little bit about that.
You're right, you're right. That's what, okay, got it. Thanks, Mike. Okay, I'll be supporting this because there'll be certainly other areas we can spend that money. We talked about the fact that the building next door no longer has an interested party. We may have to do something different, so I will be supporting this.
Any other comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Technical question, Mr. Solicitor. This ordinance indicates that it takes effects on the 11th consecutive day following passage by the council, which generally indicates that it's going to be requiring two passages. However, though it's not the operating budget, my question is, does this constitute a budget amendment related to ARPA spending? And would it only require one passage to take effect? And I'm not sure there's a simple answer to this question.
No, but it's an appropriation.
It's an appropriation, but not a budget.
Appropriation only requires one passage.
Right.
Now, I, it just...
Any appropriation, doesn't have to be a budget appropriation. When you look at ordinances.
So it will only require the one passage this evening?
I believe so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call Madam Clerk.
Councilman Conoye?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Gillette?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ciara?
Yes.
Councilman Susi?
Yes.
Councilman Ward?
Yes.
President Gendron?
Yes, and 22041 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
22R95 granting permission to use city property.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R95 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
22R96 granting permission to use city property.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R96 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
22R97 awarding the Wensocket Call as a newspaper of record qualified to publish legal notices pursuant to a request for proposal.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilwoman Ciara, seconded by Councilwoman Gonzalez. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
I just want to go on record as saying, I'm actually going to be voting in opposition to this because frankly, this whole thing is a mess created by some knee-jerk reaction back in 2001 to somehow protect the call from competition that had been cropping up at the time within the city. I'm not even talking about the Valley Breeze because it, I don't know that that was considered competition at the time. This had more to do with other local papers coming up, or something as a response to that having taken place earlier. And frankly, it's, we're the only community I know of that has this in a charter that puts this before this council for what is essentially a purchasing decision that should be made based on effectiveness of distribution of the information required and timeliness and cost. And for us to be participating in this, to me, is a waste of good time and effort, and I would prefer if it was just an administrative matter, and as such, I'll simply be voting no on this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The record reflect that Councilman Ward voted no, and 22R97 is approved, six to one.
22R98 authorizing the Police Department of the City of Wensocket to collaborate with non-adjacent Rhode Island municipalities and police departments for a proposed statewide mutual aid agreement.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Conoye. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Chief?
Yes.
It was a law that was amended in 2021 related to the ability, I guess, if there were an officer in Johnston, and he saw somebody that was, that somehow was related to an offense in Wensocket, they did not have the ability necessarily to...
No, no, that's not what this is about.
Oh, please.
Under Chapter 42, there was emergency power and non-emergency power. So under emergency power, as the night the riot happened in downtown Providence, we sent officers from Wensocket at their request for assistance. That's an emergency, that's an emergency assistance that can be done just over the radio on that. The amendment that was made was for non-emergency power. There was agreements between bordering communities that gave that authority for them to come in to work in the city or town. This is mainly put forth by smaller police chiefs in some of the institutions like URI that during a graduation want to, need to hire 10 officers to come in for graduation or commencement exercises to direct track, direct traffic. That would be considered a non-emergency situation. This MOU, or this law with the requirement of passing of a resolution of all the cities and towns, no one's obligated to sign this. If a chief decides to pass on it, he can pass on it. I honestly don't think there'll ever be a need that I'll be requesting assistance from outside, but this also gives them the ability to ask for assistance from me, but those decisions are made by me, whether I send assistance or I receive, or I receive assistance. And this just allows us to expand through the whole state so that Bristol, for example, has the Fourth of July Parade, which requires numerous, numerous officers. That would be considered a non-emergency situation. They could put out statewide to all the police chiefs, if anyone has officers that are available to go down and work the parade, to work the detail on the parade. While they're working, they have the same arrest powers and powers of sworn members of that jurisdiction for the period of time that they're working that detail under the direction of that police chief. And that's basically, it was, this was brought up, like I said, by some of the police chiefs in the Police Chiefs Association that were looking to expand the pool of officers for major events if they had, and especially, like I said, with smaller departments that don't have the manpower that we would have, or Providence or some of the other places.
Okay, I get that. I understand that. It makes perfectly good sense. My question, though, arises related to Section 4 under Cooperative Enforcement Guidelines, where there's four categories that seem to, the first three of which seem to reflect an on-duty law enforcement officer within his own jurisdiction, and I'm just going to quote the first one, "Views or otherwise has probable cause to believe a criminal offense has occurred outside the officer's home jurisdiction, but within the jurisdiction of a cooperating agency. The officer may make arrests according to law and take any measure necessary to preserve the crime scene." I'm trying to figure out what that means.
So if I was, if I was hired by the Bristol Police Department on the Fourth of July to direct traffic, and a person drove up the street, drunk driver...
Okay, I'm going to pause you there because it doesn't say that. It says, "Whenever an on-duty law enforcement officer within his home jurisdiction views or otherwise has probable cause to believe an offense has occurred outside his home jurisdiction, but within the jurisdiction of the cooperating agency." So it would be like somebody in Wensocket that's on duty recognizing somebody that's committed an offense in Bristol.
That's not, that's not what the intent, that's not what the intent of it is. I know the examples. This has been reviewed by other law departments, and I think they were just trying to use a couple of examples.
I'm just a little concerned with that. The other one that seems really out there is Section D, which says, "In a situation where automated traffic controls are located within the jurisdictional boundaries of one agency, having malfunctioned and a traffic accident is imminent unless control is established immediately, assistance from another cooperating agency may be provided upon request by the affected jurisdiction." That speed cameras? That somehow...
Not that, no, it's not that, not that...
They just seem rather peculiar descriptions in that section, and I'm certainly not in objection to the whole concept and the premise of it, where I frankly never knew that you were not allowed to cooperate with other communities that were not adjacent to Wensocket. I always, always thought that if a community called for help, any community in the state could do it, but apparently not.
Not unless it was declared an emergency.
So with that, I mean, I'll be supportive of this, but I would, I would ask that the solicitor, in the interest of Wensocket, review those sections and try to get me or the council an explanation as to how that scenario plays out in accordance with considered a cooperative agreement. It's not critical to the success of the program, I'm sure, but it's an interesting description.
Actually, Councilman, we did have a conversation. Those are some of the things that we talked about, that I pointed out to the chief, but he's confident in, I believe, most of the municipalities in the state cooperating, so we could always opt out.
No, and realistically, as I said before, I don't envision, I don't envision us potentially using this. It's just, at the time of this initial inception, they were asking all the agencies if your city or town is interested in that. It's just something to have in your back pocket if you did want, if you did want to use it, say for Autumn Fest. If I, for whatever reason, had, say, some major other events going on, it gives me the ability to ask, just instead of North Smithfield and Cumberland, but I could get people from Providence if I, if they, if they so wanted on that non-emergency type situ, non-emergency type situation.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Councilman Ward, I just, I, only because I read it differently when I read it, I want to give my explanation of how I read it, and maybe I'm not reading it right either, but the way I understood it is, "Whenever an on-duty law officer within his home jurisdiction views and otherwise, views or otherwise has probable cause to believe a criminal offense has occurred outside the officer's home jurisdiction." What I took that to mean was that they have to be actively working in the city of Wensocket, and the chief sends them to Bristol to work the parade. They cannot engage a detail directly with Bristol because they are not working in their home jurisdiction. So they first have to be employed and currently activated by the chief as a Wensocket police officer, and then he sends him in the capacity as chief to Bristol to work the Bristol Parade. But they are really working in Bristol as an officer on duty within their home jurisdiction. And that was how I understood it. Maybe I'm not reading it right.
No, I think that's, I think that's what the intent is, just what you said.
Okay. I, I recognize your, your reading of that. I, and I guess all of the other descriptions that come before that do rank reference to the fact that they're, a Wensocket officer will always be working under the rules of the Wensocket Police Department and will have authorities, no more authority than is allowed by the Wensocket Police Department, is subject to the Code of Ethics of the Wensocket Police Department, and is paid by the Wensocket Police Department, I understand. And unless some outside agency is reimbursing the community to which they're sent, they, the city is paying the bill for that officer.
No, the hosting jurisdiction, the Bristol Police Department, just, they, they need to get my authority for me to send my sworn officer who's sworn in to Bristol. Once he's in, once he's in Bristol, working as that police officer, that, that, that community would reimburse, that community would reimburse, would reimburse him under most, under most cases.
Okay. We can have a conversation after this. It gets philosophical when you get into some of the language, but...
But either way, I'm going to be supporting it, so...
I'm supporting it too. I'm just, it's just a little confusing with that second section. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R98 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
22R99 awarding a contractor, Hags, Sadey &amp; Company, PC for ordering and agreed-upon procedures.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Gillette. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Conoye?
I'd like to make an amendment to Section 1 and the second sentence right after the word charter. So it says, let me, let me back up. It says, "The city council of the city of Wensocket, in conformity with Chapter 8, Section 10, entitled purchasing of the Home Rule Charter," and I want to insert, "and pursuant to request for proposal number 6088 hereby approves the award of a contract to Hags, Sadey, et cetera." So I just want to insert, "in pursuant to request for proposal 6088," because I want a record of what the RFP was under which this contract was awarded.
Yep.
Thank you.
Motion made by Councilman Conoye?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Ciara and Gonzalez to amend 22R99. On the motion to amend, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R99 is approved, is amended, seven to zero. On the main motion as amended, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R99 is approved unanimously, seven to zero as amended.
22R100 placing a referendum question pursuant to the Rhode Island Cannabis Act relating to cannabis establishments in public use on the ballot for the general election to be held on November 8, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by the Chair. Comments?
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
For the public's interest, this referendum question is being put on the ballot because if the city of Wensocket chose, or the council chose not to put this question before the voters, we would automatically be obligated, Solicitor, to authorize licenses to sell marijuana, more generic term, in the city of Wensocket, and would not be able to prohibit its sale in the city, where by putting this question on the ballot, it allows the voters to opt out of us participating in the sale of cannabis and products like that in the city for recreational use or medicinal use for that matter.
Right, right, and you're putting it before the voters as provided for in the 125-page statute that was passed.
Right.
If it wasn't, if we, if we didn't pass it, we would still have the ability to have some restrictions, which is contained in the bill, such as zoning and things of that nature. But this gives the voters the opportunity to choose whether they want any at all.
And, and on the other side of that coin, there will be discussion, I'm sure, about And, and on the other side of that coin, there will be discussion, I'm sure, about the fact that under the legislation, any community that allows for the sale of such products will be enjoying the benefit of a 3%
That's correct.
Sales tax that will come directly to the community out of the total taxes collected against that product, correct?
That's correct. And just a couple of things for the council, the question was in the law, so it's a no-brainer. The statute provided the question, so the question that we're putting on the ballot is the identical question that the law provided us. And we will also have an explanation of it for the voters, which I'm sure the Board of Canvases will prepare something, just as they will for the, for the other charter amendment. There will be explanations for, as to what they do.
Thank you very much.
But the only thing that goes on the ballot is the actual question, and that's all that ever goes on the ballot, is the actual question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and 22R100 is approved unanimously, seven to zero.
Council President?
Councilman Ward?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Ward, seconded by Councilman Canoia to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at 8:50.